He's coaching baseball games, Monday nights.
We'll go straight into it. He's busy. He's busy. Any other comments, questions, or excuse me, changes to the agenda? I would entertain a motion.
I approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you very much. Second, Niagara, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Bestie Eckstein?
Yes.
Bestie Pay?
Yes.
Bestie Niagara?
Yes.
Bestie Row?
Yes.
Bestie Swisher?
Yes.
Bestie Wobbe?
Yes. Thank you all very much. Next is consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
I have a comment.
Yes.
I'm enjoying the, the police report. I think that, that the chief is doing a nice job of reporting on, on their activities. And the fire, the fire report was good, too.
That was nice, wasn't it? Yes, it was. Lot of activity going on here. How long will Acting Chief Best be with us in that respect?
Sorry, Chris Green. He, not ready to announce anything yet on that, but he's still with us helping us transition out of the fire station. And then Robert, Chief Robert Bertram, who was on tonight, actually, he will present. And during staff reports, he'll share this. This is his first chief report, fire chief report.
All right. And, and one of the reasons I asked that is the, there is a fire chief's award at the car show. And I was asked today, who's the fire chief? Well, he's, I think he'll still be here. Will he be here the second August?
He'll be here through August.
Cool. He can do that award. Any other questions? Consent it in. I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, Swisher. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Bestie Eckstein?
Yes.
Bestie Pay?
Yes.
Bestie Niagara?
Yes.
Bestie Row?
Yes.
Bestie Swisher?
Yes.
Bestie Wobbe?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Next item is public comment. No, excuse me. I'm sorry. Oh, that's minute. Okay, thank you. Open this meeting to public comment. If you would, enter your name and address in the chat box, or you may, if you are on the phone, press star nine in the meeting post will prompt you to unmute. It is your turn to speak.
There is, Jeff Edson has his hand raised. We will. Mike's got him.
Mike's got him. Okay. Great. Thank you, Jeff. If you would like to state your name and address, please, and you have three minutes.
Jeff, you need to go off mute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Jeff Edson, 117 River Run Court. I would just like to follow up. I sat through the work session. I would like to follow up with a couple of comments on that. So to the trustees, mayor, and staff, I want to thank the town staff for their thoughtful and thorough analysis of short-term rentals in Buena Vista. The proposed policy changes directly support the community vision statement. Quoting from the community vision statement, which is part of the comprehensive plan, the vision statement establishes the context for the board of trustees and town staff when making decisions prioritizing and establishing policy for Buena Vista. And, end quote, "As you consider the STR policy changes, please note how they fully support the community vision statement." First of all, setting an upper limit on the STR licenses relates to preservation of the community. Again, I quote, "A quiet and secure community that is desirable place to live, work, and play. Friendly, well-informed people who feel they can make a difference and have an impact in determining their future and their quality of life." End quote. Secondly, by recognizing the need for a balance between local and non-local ownership satisfies the requirement, quoting again, "That land use decisions are made with thoughtfulness and an eye towards sustainability." And lastly, the exemption of certain zone districts where STRs are desired and present minimal impact supports the statement, again, I quote, "Land uses can coexist in a well-patterned, well-planned pattern." So taking these policy changes as a whole helps support the following objective, again, I quote from the vision statement, "All citizens enjoy financial prosperity and can find an affordable place to live in a manner that encourages sustainability, smart growth, and diversification." End quote. "I would expect some serious objections to these policy changes by special interest groups, but I encourage you to have the courage to uphold the preservation of our community as outlined in the community vision statement." Regarding the details of the policy changes, I have about four bullet points to go over, but I think I'm probably out of time. If somebody wants to ask me a question, what those four bullet points are, I'll go over them quickly.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Anybody have any comments?
Can you email the bullet points or something to have on public?
Is that a question?
I don't think I can ask a question during.
I said you could, yes.
Mr. Edson, would you kindly maybe perhaps email those bullet points?
Yeah, I can email this whole statement. It includes those four bullet points.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Thank you for letting me have public comment.
Well, thank you for joining. We welcome.
Mayor?
Yes.
Jeff, this is Town Administrator Philip Puckett. If you don't mind including me as well, so I can make sure we get those into the record and staff can see them as well.
Yeah. Do you want me to email them only to you or just the whole board?
Make it easier on you. Email them to me and I'll get them to the board.
Thank you.
Okay, will do.
Thank you, Philip. Do we see anybody else? Hand raised.
I saw another one. Sorry, let me check.
That's right.
So.
Put my hand down.
Okay, okay, that was you, Michelle. Okay.
It was.
I do not see any others, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you very much, Jeff, for speaking up. So I close portion of the public comment. Next item is staff reports. Michelle Stokes, Town Treasurer. You're first.
Thank you, Mayor. Trustees, my, my report is on page 28 of the packet. And again, noting the transparency website and the URL for the 2021 budget. I did have, I finished up the workers' comp audit this week and had a meeting with Pinnacle. And they are adjusting our premium by $37,670. And the explanation they gave for, for that to me was that the premium is estimated based on payroll for different work, worker roles. And the 2020 audit that we just did in 2021, the 2020 audit we just did, so the 2019 audit, which was in 2020, was estimated because it was never completed because of COVID, was estimated on, on the 19 audit, which was based on 18 payroll. Does that make sense? Anyways, since the 2018 payroll was down, well, we've added, we had added four firefighters and I believe three or four policemen. And they are the highest rated payroll of the, of the bunch. Since last year's premium was estimated based on 2018 information, it was underestimated and we were undercharged for that year. And so looking at our payroll for 2020, they came up with a much higher premium. So they will build this 37,670 all-in-one fell swoop. Now that brings our yearly premium to $89,000, which we have been in that territory before. In 2018, in 2019, for 18, we paid $89,000 or $87,000. And so it actually has gone down based on what the premium should have been. But this is a catch-up, basically. Does anybody have any, any, any questions on that?
Trustees.
Good explanation.
You forgot 2017.
2017 was based on 16. And we didn't have, we had one firefighter in 16, but
That explains it.
Nonetheless, that's the explanation there. And I'm not sure I could have explained it any better, putting it on paper. In fact, it probably would have been very confusing had I tried to write it out. The All Hazard Wildland Program Fund is now under my jurisdiction. Shawna is, I'm her supervisor now, based on the vote that we had on the IGA with Chaffee Fire that we had in, in May. And so I asked her the first meeting of every month to give me a little biopic on what's going on in the wildland program. So you can go ahead and read, read them, read what she had to write. There are, there's a lot of stuff happening and it's picking up steam by a bunch. So that is there. Then the next section is town expenditures, our payroll, our incident response of 42,000, which is also incident response, wildland response. That's all the same thing. And then our section of expenditures over 2,000. And I will take questions at this time.
Trustees, any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Cindy.
Bears Landscaping, 9,500 maintenance services. Is that for one month or does that cover more than a month?
It does cover more than one month. That's about half of what we're contracted with them for this year. So we, instead of doing the typical seasonal summer hires, we converted that money to contract with ours to do a river park around the community center of South Main so that we didn't get behind like we haven't been the last few years. So that's about half of what we, of the total contract.
And then there's usually another item in here for the summertime and it's for the fertilizing something lawn care. And I apologize to whoever, because I can't remember the complete name. Are they still providing that service in addition to this?
That's right.
Okay.
We just haven't gotten an invoice from them yet.
They actually fertilized today, so.
Haylon? Okay.
Thank you, Cindy. Any other questions for Michelle? Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Next is Police, Police Chief Dean Morgan.
Hey there. Hopefully everybody can hear me all right.
Yep.
I'll just go through my report real quick. On Friday, May 14th, Jake England graduated from the Police Academy. I think you all met him at the swearing in at the last meeting. He's the first cadet that the town of Buena Vista sponsored as a graduate. So that's pretty cool. He's in his field training program and he's doing really well. We did tip a cop on May 15th and raised about $1,900, which was one of the highest amounts raised. So that's really cool. And they did it the following week at Patio Pancake. Let's see. And that raises money for Special Olympics. And just a quick comment on that, that's a type of community policing. We try to find a balance with that. I think one of the good ways for the police to alienate their community is to just be really heavy-handed with enforcement. So while enforcement is important, we do try to find a balance with community policing and engagement as well. And programs like that are really a big part of that. We've just had some pretty cool trainings. We did active shooter with State Patrol and some other officers on the 18th. And we did our radar and lidar class on the 19th. And those are all geared towards speed enforcement, which I know is an issue in town. And we're definitely trying to stay on top of that. We just got two new patrol cars and new patrol rifles. And Sergeant Garcia coordinated all of that and he did a really good job with it. So that should be the last of the patrol cars that we were supposed to get. And there was a pretty big delay with the dealerships and things because of COVID. So it took longer than we thought, but they're out here now. Just some statistics from some of the reports. We had 50 reports and 43 citations last year from May 2020. And this year we had 43 reports and 70 citations. So we're definitely stepping up that traffic enforcement. And our K-9 Thor and Sergeant Adair, the handler, they've been called out a couple of times in the last few weeks for some pretty serious calls. And that's some mutual aid to Salida and Chaffee County Sheriff's Office. And just last week, we had officers down in Pueblo on a major crimes case executing search warrants. So we've been super busy. Summer's definitely here. A lot of you probably saw on Facebook, the moose that was in the town lake. That was really cool. Got a picture of that. And I've been meeting with a lot of department heads from different agencies, just coordinating and things like that. I met with Chief Bertram on the 18th and I met with DOC on May 20th about the inmate work release program. That's all I have. Thank you.
Trustees, any questions, comments for Dean?
Thank you. Chief, are we still seeking officers or are we at full strength these days?
Yeah, so we're still down two. We have two hired that are going to be going to the academy in August. And we had two in this last academy and one of them kind of fumbled and unfortunately didn't make it. But Jake did a really excellent job. So that hurt us, but we're getting back up to speed. It's just, just a process. And we are very specific and intentional about who we hire, because there's a lot of liability. As you've probably recognized from the news, if you hire the wrong guy. So we do have a pretty strict standard and hiring process. But with that, it takes some time.
Understood. Thank you.
So just to be clear, when, when the two that finished the academy this fall are on board, we're technically full staffed, okay, at that point.
Yeah.
Any other questions for?
This is the report I meant to comment on. It wasn't part of the consent agenda.
Part of the consent, it was this one.
But I like this report very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. You're very concise. It helps. Our next item is the Chief's Report from Chaffee County Fire Protection District.
Good evening, everybody. So I've been going back and forth. I've actually got two meetings going on at once right now. So just kind of be brief on here. It's, you know, been a pretty busy couple of weeks. Been working to meet with different department heads, figure out how we can work more effectively together. Chief Morgan mentioned that we, we had a meeting. We're going to look at doing a training with, with him and some of the officers on, on how we integrate together. We did have a meeting. We did go over to the airport, talked about some ideas there of doing some hazmat training with them here in the future and just figuring out how we can integrate our response a bit better. In the last couple of months, we've been involved with the event planning and our events meetings and the planning meetings. So we're up to speed with that. But also this month, we spent some time working out some of the small details as far as, as fees and a little bit of differences such as burn ordinances and so forth, and how we can integrate them a little bit better to be, you know, be smooth through the county and in town, understanding there is some differences between town and county when it comes to campfires and burns and so forth like that. We are, we did get approval from the Board of Directors. We are going to be posting for two positions. We're going to be hiring a fire inspector and a maintenance assistant. Hoping to have that onboard mid-July to be able to help us staff, do more inspections, as well as kind of help with our overall staffing plan with our Station 4 addition. We've got JP Front Fire Patrol. That's one of the things that came to you guys last month with, we did get funding from Common Ground. To fund that, we're just working through the last couple of hoops of how we work better with the beds in, you know, on these public lands. So we do have one more meeting to fully integrate that. And then we're going to be starting these prevention patrols. Former BB firefighter Nathan Allen has rejoined our resident program. So he has moved back into our resident house in Netherup and has begun to run the shifts with us. So it's a great, he can still, still respond and be an asset to the county. And here's kind of the big thing, I think everybody was kind of curious about. As of last week, we have responded on four medical calls. Those were the ones where the ambulance was out of position. Two of them were back-to-back. We had a traffic accident on Trout Creek and then ran back-to-back calls in town. We had great response to those. I'm very happy with how that, that turned out and how EMS is and us are working well together on these incidents. We did have another one last week, a medical call as well. So it's a, you know, we had 16 last year and then five here in the last week, or basically two weeks. So it was kind of anomaly. We'll see how it goes further on. As far from that, we've had two automatic fire alarm calls. Now, we had one this weekend. We had a dumpster fire. And then we got called out with health co-enforcement with a cat rescue.
So.
And then kind of go on the last portion of there, a couple of things that we're excited about. We've got our new engine that we put into service last week. So excited about that. You've seen in town, it's a rescue engine. We've had this and it works for a while. We purchased it and it was out for refurbishment. So it's fully operational, as well as we took possession of our brand-new UTV that is equipped for fighting fires in the wildland urban interface area, as well as we can do backcountry extrication and so forth, and be able to utilize that for special events, times when it's hard to get around either in town or if, you know, some of these other larger festivals come around, that will give us a little bit easier way to get around it, be equipped with emergency lighting and so forth. So we're excited to have that. That was one of the friends of Chaffee County Fire and the Rotary Clubs in El Camara helped fund that. And then we've got a new tactical tender that's coming online. We'll be putting that in service in Netherup. Probably here in two days. That's a new four-wheel-drive, 2,000-gallon water truck, but it's set up for structural firefighting as, as well as wildland. That's basic synopsis of my report. Let's get, feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions on any of these things or other things you'd like to see in the reports. This is this first report I've given to you guys with this arrangement. And definitely look forward to working with you guys further in the future.
Thank you very much, Chief. Any questions for Robert? Sounds like a busy, busy beginning already. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Next item is, first business item, is the community engagement and master planning proposal for town-owned property near Collegiate Commons. Presentation will be made by Joseph Typle. I noticed Becky is available. Is she going to chime in or is she just listening, Joseph? Both.
A little bit of both. We'll see. We'll see.
Do you want to lead in a little bit, Philip, or?
Sure. So yeah, to set the stage, why, why we're bringing this forward. So the town owns two parcels next to Collegiate Commons that we, part of it we acquired through the Collegiate Commons land swap deal. The other parcel has been owned by town for a long time. And we've gone through, Becky helped with some analysis of that last year, pre-COVID, I think, to take a look at, you know, where it's at, some potential uses, the value, things like that. So we've been looking at it, talking about it a little bit. Again, staff is kind of seeing the urgency with the housing situation. And we've, we've had a great success so far with Joseph and the Community Foundation. And so we reached out to him and Becky, Becky Gray and said, hey, would you be interested in, you know, getting a project discussion going on these town-owned parcels? And they enthusiastically said yes. So locked him in. So he's here tonight to share with you kind of where, where we're proposing to go with this and, and have a good community-involved process to kind of dial in what development we'd like to see there. So with that, I'll turn to you, Joseph.
Yeah. Thank you. Good evening, trustees. Mayor, it's wonderful to be with you in person. I appreciate that being an opportunity shown to me. So yeah, I'm, I'm very excited to be in this conversation with you all. As a community member in town, I feel the housing crunch alongside all of you. And I do think that we're all recognizing it's not going away. It's not getting better on its own. We need to address it as the crisis that it is. I applaud your leadership and the leadership of staff in identifying and re-elevating your role in that, which to me intersects beautifully with the parcels of land that you do own. And I think that's the most logical place to start asking the questions of how can you truly build and develop housing units to help address this crisis? As you know, I am not a housing expert, nor is the foundation a housing organization. I come before you this evening primarily as a partner, as a thought partner, and trying to fulfill our role, the foundation is a catalyst and convenor. While our mission and our, our strategic priorities do include housing, our role in that is asking questions, convening stakeholders, and thinking creatively about how to address this challenge in a new way. I have a distinct honor to work alongside Becky Gray very closely, especially these days. You all might be familiar with the project that we're spearheading in Chaffee's place. It's a very innovative and creative approach to transitional housing and we'll be delivering 17 housing units along with nonprofit community space there, hopefully breaking ground into this year. So the proposal put before you is very, evolving very rapidly. Just this afternoon, joined staff and, in a, in a conversation with potential investors and developers in town and just seeing the interest that folks have in this area. And being very optimistically or happily surprised by their focus on what, what we sort of sometimes refer to as the missing middle, that sort of 80 to 130, 140% AMI housing. And it brought to light the fact that there may be a couple of tweaks that we can talk about to this proposal for you. But really, it hones, it hones back into this question of how is a community helping to direct its own resources? And its own resource extends to town and land, right? This, this land is the community. And so that's really what the basis of this proposal is to do, is saying, how can we, as a community foundation, partner with town, with housing authority, and with other stakeholders to, to identify what can be built to address these priorities? Those priorities are housing, first and foremost, also looking at childcare, daycare. And then lastly, economic development. And specifically, as you recall, having heard from the Economic Development Corporation, they're pursuing entrepreneurial ecosystem work, which you also. They're pursuing entrepreneurial ecosystem work, which you also supported with a matching commitment, uh they're pursuing a grant from DOLA to do work there. So ask the question, what physical facilities will aid their work in economic development entrepreneurial supports? Um as you all know, and when we, when anyone approaches land development, there's this, there's a huge amount of work that has to go into. That that um development idea before it's even ready to be put on the paper as a site planner concept. And that's really the bulk of the work that we're proposing, is saying, how can we convene all the stakeholders appropriately? Ask creative questions and try to get down on paper, what what are we, what's feasible on these properties? What does ownership structure look like? How does town ensure that the benefit remains in the community in perpetuity? Uh what's the proper role for the housing authority, what's the proper role for um who's gonna own and manage the housing? Um and then how can we also look at the childcare and economic development opportunities and mixed-use development? As this mentions, those two properties um combined with the whole triangle right away next to the property two are about two acres. Um the lot number two currently zoned, uh R2, um which would allow multifamily residential without rezoning. Um lot number one, uh currently zoned mixed-use two. Um so really looking at, how do we develop, uh what's a concept that develops both of those parcels in concert with each other? Um and yet honoring the existing zoning, um and try to decrease barriers to to development. I'll say that. I'm happy to answer more more questions on the scope of work, but I think more pertinent would be updates from. Um conversations had today, it feels most appropriate to reduce the financial ask in this proposal. From what was originally listed up to forty thousand dollars, down to a fifteen thousand dollar amount. And the primary reason for that is seeking to say, um it's maybe. Best left to uh private sector at the moment, possibilities for market study, surveying, and actual site plan. Um and maybe not only on, you know, town-owned lots, but on on this uh potentially significant work that they want to do in the community. And so now feeling like you want to ask town to pay for those things on your lots right now, um given that they may already be in the works um. In with with these other folks, and so um. To me, the work really is focused on community, convening stakeholders, um building partnerships, figuring out what's gonna move the conversation from. Ideas of or recognizing need to having a plan for implementing a solution. So with that, I'll pause, I don't know if you, if I missed things from.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a good description, I think. One, one of the, one of the lessons learned that we had coming out of the Collegiate Commons process was. The, I guess, the desire uh from within the community to be heard or to have a a say in what it is. Eventually, if it's gonna be on town property, if there's gonna be any gives to the developer. And that's ultimately, I think, what Joseph um is is the meat of this now. And and yeah, we've had some exciting conversations, it's been a whirlwind this afternoon, just thinking about uh the potential with some of that. But it made a lot of sense to us to say, let's pull the market study out of this proposal. And focus on partnering with uh Joseph and Chiggy Foundation on the the uh public input, community involvement, building up the partnerships with businesses. Getting that part done. Um so that the project is is more ready to go when somebody does come forward and says, here's, here's how I'd like to. Uh help you all achieve those goals that are outlined and would evolve, I'm assuming, with more community input as well. So. So yeah, I think the the scope, the the phases in here changed a little bit, but the meat of it again was more public involvement, right?
Yeah, and and you know, just to call out a couple of specific pieces, you know, I would not change the overall layout of the phases at all. Um I would say that. The emphasis would be less on engaging consultants to put pen to paper and more on convening appropriate stakeholders and listening to their needs. For example, um one way in which we're moving forward with Jane's Place is grabbing on to this idea that. Housing should be designed and paid for uh with the end user in mind. And that's, that's very easy to see in some uh low-income housing tax credit projects like Collegiate Commons, where the housing is subsidized from another source. And it's specifically designed for folks within a specific category. And yet when we don't have access to those subsidies, we need to pay for housing in a different way. And if with Jane's Place, we're really asking questions of local employers, what housing do you need the most? Where is your pinch points? How can you help be part of the solution? In order to benefit your business and your workforce and your. Part of the conversation, looking at Buna Vista, we're distinct in many ways from Salida, we share many of the same trend trends with Salida. And so we're not trying to copy Jane's Place, and yet we're we're using that model of saying. How do we listen to those that are actually providing jobs and having them inform what housing should look like on town property? So that's, that's a big piece of this proposal that um would stay intact, um regardless of any uh financial changes. Yeah, and I just want to offer the opportunity for Becky to jump in if if she has anything she wants to throw into the pot.
Um hi, everyone, um thanks for inviting me here, I like the way you have your Zoom room set up, it's very efficient. I don't really have anything to add other than saying thank you to Joseph and Philip and Mark and and Joel for putting some thought behind. The most appropriate process for engaging the public to make sure that um whatever project is built on those sites. Is directly serving the needs of the community, so thank you, everyone, I I just really look forward to carrying this forward.
Thank you, Becky, um questions for Joseph, comments?
I have a comment that is probably backwards, I'm sure you guys have already thought about this, but you're you're talking about developing these properties. And I just want to make sure that other entities that have resource to contribute, you know, the school has land, hospital has money, DOC has probably both. Sanger to Kristoino has a little bit of money and some resource to develop. When when I think about like leveraging. All of these resources for highest and best use, I'm wondering if it's been considered, and I'm sure it has, that. Developing on these properties versus selling these for market value and leveraging that into something with a with another partner that might have some land like the school, I just want to make sure that. Are there, those other resources have been contacted, if that makes any sense?
Yeah. And from from my perspective, the stakeholders you mentioned are on the the top of the list for engaging. I think from um. From my perspective, when town owns uh vacant land. The dent that you could make in housing from the the raw value of that land by selling it. I don't think compares to the dent you could make by following a very intentional. Uh thought-out process to actually build on that land, and and not only that, but then it retains the control. In your hands or the hands of something like the housing authority, um which you all have your hands in, um so. I would, um that's part of how I would approach the work, is thinking about this from the public's perspective and saying. How can we not only make a dent in housing and childcare, but how can we also make sure that what we start. Will continue in to honor that original vision in perpetuity and what structures make sense?
Part of the conversations we had yesterday, we're definitely encompassing other entities and other uh opportunities, land opportunities in town. Um I think this is a notice to everybody, to to your point, I'm gonna take that opportunity to say. This isn't all on the town, and these, all these other entities need to step up. And do part, their part in the community involvement as well, but I'm I'm not saying, I'm just, I want to take that opportunity because the school owns a lot of great resource. That's in a prime location, that can contribute greatly to to the housing situation, the DOC as well, so yeah.
We can't force them to change their minds, but yeah, I I I just inviting them to the conception, inception, conception, like.
Yes, and and I think to invite them to a maybe a. A creative way of thinking about their assets, right? Um I think sometimes we force ourselves into silos of, we either have to sell or build or X, Y, Z. But many times when we bring more partners around the table, Sanger to Kristo being a perfect example. What assets could they bring that would actually uh leverage town-owned property, maybe school-owned property? Um in a way that might not have been possible by by those silent.
Other questions? Comments, go ahead, Timmy.
So the town isn't trying to sell the property, we would become landlords? I I I don't understand.
No, so. Sorry. The ghost, that always seems to happen right before I'm about to say something. Uh be, the town is not right now interested in in being a landlord. We could do a land lease, so that's similar to what we've done with Collegiate Commons, uh discussions we're having with Boys and Girls Club. Where it does give town uh some level of control over a long period of time, but not involved with the uh. Managing tenants and, you know, all of that detail, we would pull partners into that or private sector to to come in and be a part of that. So uh we could sell, I mean, that's part of why this this process is important, because we'll find out. Probably what's the highest and best use, but we could sell, but we'll want to make sure that there's a uh. A control mechanism that we can achieve what we feel is most important with that property or or a land lease. Would be another way to do it.
And I would offer, you know, the other, one of the other critical stakeholders from employment standpoint is the town itself. And asking questions, what workforce needs, uh workers' housing needs does the town have? And how can this property come to bear on on finding solutions for that? So I think there's so many different angles to be explored here.
Go ahead, David.
Um just in reading through this, I'm impressed with it, um but I was wondering, um as you go along through the different phases. To whom are you reporting, or to whom are you accountable in terms of of the work that's getting done?
I am partly the answer to that to Philip, I mean, I'm, I I would assume that um. I would be reporting to Philip and saying, what we're finding, give me direction, making sure that this is aligning with your expectations. Um I'm also happy to come back before trustee board as appropriate um throughout the process, uh to also get, you know, feedback direction.
I would say, you know, more or less, just what you said, as it progresses, you will have. Come back and report direction from board. Come back and report direction from, you know, I mean, it would just be that cycle back and forth to say, yeah, that's the direction we want to go, that's, that sounds right, you know what I mean? Um the. I think the key is, is what you said before, is the longevity of the project. Um it's not to get it done and and be here for five years and walk away and say, yeah, we accomplished this in five years. It's for that to continue in perpetuality, for that housing to maintain or the childcare to maintain, so that it doesn't just go away at the end of the cycle. I think that's, that's really key. Amy?
Uh just a couple of small points, uh thanks for putting this together, it's amazing. Um so for AMI, just a board notice, it's, that's, I'm concerned what an average person makes. So what will happen is they'll leave one average for the whole county, I believe, and Becky, feel free to chime in. Uh but worth noting, a resident who lives in Salida uh makes more than a typical resident that lives in Buna Vista, so when we look at AMIs, I just. I I might be too early on to even talk about that, but I just want that to be consideration, and then. Um the childcare, that was, that that's something our community definitely needs, but I liked what um the table we brought up about working with the school. And then entrepreneurial and small business development, just one kind of thought I had as a partner, um so the ROE, the resilient. Ecosystem is looking to develop, you know, fifty new entrepreneurs in the next five years. And so that's fifty people using that space is what I think of, and I'm wondering if maybe a partner, say, just for example, C and C, would that widen that? The people that would be able to use that space for maybe early childhood education, you know, like to educate the teachers that are gonna work in the childhood facility. Tradesmen, I'm wondering if that could be a benefit, or is it maybe they're like, no, we want this space and we'll pay you rent for that space, I'm not sure. If all those things can be fitted, but that was just my only suggestion to maybe garner wider, could it garner wider community support if there was more of a wider education? Wider uh target market for that space? That's just a thought.
And I I love, I love that, and I think um C and C will be an important educational partner. When you think about programming that space, not only for entrepreneurial incubation, um and whatever assets that could bring to that conversation. But also these other uses, especially as it relates to daycare and childcare. And then. AMIs, I I appreciate you saying that, and I think part of the idea would be engaging you as business owners and saying, what are you paying your staff? What what is the range, right, because it is different in Salida. Um and those that are struggling the most with housing might be in a certain wage range here versus wage range in Salida, so I think. That's some of the nuance that we would hope to tease.
Other questions? So the question I have to the board is, are we ready to pursue? That look in, looking at. Engaging and finding out the direction for that property, I guess is the way I'll put it, and if we are, then in that being said. We would go into motion. To approve the financing on this, obviously it can be, it's under the twenty thousand. Um so it could actually be done in board consent agenda type deal, but I would like to hear the board voice. Yay or nay to approve that financial. Outlet.
I'll make the motion right now, I think we, we gotta pursue every opportunity we can, so I think this is the best thing that, best thing we got, let's.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the fifteen thousand.
Thank you very much, you can have a second.
I'll second.
Second, hey, further discussion? We'll call it, please.
Trustee Eckstein?
Yes.
Trustee Pay?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Row?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
Trustee Polby?
Yes.
Thank you all very much, there's a lot going on, I know Joseph and. We'll just, at this point, it'll be keeping in touch with Philip and.
Let's know when the people can move in.
Do we want to, I guess we have set up to schedule, I see Earl is back, but we'll go ahead to the street, street improvement projects.
Okay.
Um Sean is, I assume, here.
I don't.
Yeah, I didn't see him.
Hey, Sean, that's okay, we can.
We can blaze right through.
We can do it, we can do it, I know, nobody wants to see the streets worked on, right?
Uh no, we want to see it worked on, we just want to approve it to get them work.
Oh, okay, okay.
So the next item on the agenda is Street Improvement Projects, adoption of resolution number twenty-seven, I'll bet he thinks it's on Tuesday. Uh series twenty-twenty-one, entitled A Resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Buna Vista, Colorado, approving notice award two. S and S Unlimited for the twenty-twenty-one street paving projects. I guess, Joel, your problem, well, we could let, who could we else could we have run with this?
Um Catherine looks like she knows streets.
Yeah, Catherine would.
No, I uh, I'm happy to uh speak a little bit about this, so. Yeah, we're we're ready, obviously, to to jump ahead and get some of our street improvements going, you can see in the the. Memo, the description of which streets and where, uh we're excited about that. Uh one thing to note that we do have a budget for chip seal separate from paving, this is the paving portion. Uh Sean will bring back probably next meeting the chip seal portion of that. Uh to award that or to move forward with that, so just to highlight that that was what is before you is the paving. And I, you know, they they, a lot of work goes in this to analyze the streets, and then you come out of the winter season and then you see something else and it's like, oh, man, are we picking the right ones? And so I just tell Sean. Just keep plugging away, just keep moving ahead, uh you'll, you'll never uh have the perfect sequence. Uh but we have so many streets that need attention, so he, they're, keep plugging away, but if, you know, obviously, this isn't covering. But if, you know, obviously, this isn't covering all the streets that need help. Their uh asphalt plant is now getting going and everything. So they'll be plugging a lot of those uh halls and Court Street will be dealt with once the bank project is out of the way. So a lot of these things will start to look better soon. And uh, let's see if there was anything else we wanted to point out there. I think that's it. So any questions? Total cost of the project?
Go ahead, Libby.
Um, Philip, it seems like on North Pleasant Avenue, there are some areas that really have drainage problems. Uh, right around Brookdale and and Pleasant, and I think maybe down around Princeton and Pleasant. So I'm wondering, um, are those dealt with as part of this proposal as well?
They repair the subgrade first, and then they do crown so that it creates a positive drainage as part of the paving project. Yes. So it may not solve all drainage in every place, but they, where where it does start to settle, that will be corrected with the proper crowning of the street.
Great. Thank you.
Anybody else? Questions?
Yeah, I had a question about, I don't know, I don't know how to phrase it exactly, but I live off of uh stuff, Gunnison and that road over the last two years has been repaved. And uh, it seems like a lot of it is not flat anymore. I was just wondering about this, how we go about these contracts and if it's a cheaper way, or if there's a better way to make something that'll last longer and have higher quality. Um, you know, the section between Gunnison, on Gunnison between Oak and and Main is a I ride a twin like road bike everywhere. So I notice when things aren't flat. And uh, I was just curious about that kind of stuff. And and then on my section, which is south of Oak Street, the tar quality is very like loose and like it'll stick to your your shoes kind of thing. And um, because I do all the work on my car and stuff in the street because I don't have a place to do stuff. So I always have to be like, all right, I'm wearing the clothes that can stick to tar now. And so, um, I don't know. I don't know if that's the question or an answer or comment, but.
Well, I have a response. So that's a chip seal.
Okay.
So that's a much cheaper alternative to extend the life of that road, but it will have to be basically redone and repaved at some point. So it it gets us a few more years at a lower price point. So um, yeah, that's different. The paving is a higher quality. It's a lot more expensive as well.
So this is actually paving?
Correct. Okay. Yeah, cool. So we'll use chip seals a way to give more life out of streets that we see like will eventually need to be.
Re-dermbed. Give us like, so chip seal gives like how many years versus even, you know?
Uh, I don't know. I don't know that.
I think a lot of that.
It's a significant difference.
Yeah. And I think a lot of that is based on the the substrate. If it's a good solid ground, they'll chip seal.
Right.
But if you get in, for example, like what we're talking about here on North Pleasant and actually the other one, they're going to actually mill it.
Yeah.
On North Court. They're going to take off the top because it's so bad. And then lay down a new layer, whereas the exact wouldn't go the chip seal. It's all, you know, everything's okay. We're wanting to fill some cracks. And you want to just extend the life of that asphalt. Um, it's never quite as nice.
Right.
But it extends, like you say, extends longevity. Now, when you say rough, is it rough like this?
Yeah, and it's like, well, like, you know, it's bike versus a car. So.
Mm hmm.
You know, it's, I know where the holes are.
It's a rougher feel and it won't last as long.
Yeah.
It's not designed to replace.
Right.
It should extend the life.
Okay. I was just curious on how those things work and.
And and.
When I think of a chip seal, I think of like the little lines of the road.
Crack seal.
Right.
Crack seal. So crack seal, they're a chip seal. All right. Your next for real.
Big difference.
I ask all these same questions in my one on ones with Sean. So cool.
And I'd move to approve resolution number twenty seven in series twenty twenty one.
Have a motion.
Second.
Second, Nyberg. Further discussion? This is in the budget, but we will call for, we'll call up, please.
Trustee Eckstein?
Yes.
Trustee Pay?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Row?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
Trustee Polby?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda is Earl. Are you with us? There he is. We'll hear from the recreation director's report.
Here, I'm here, Earl.
Man, I'm getting rusty. Good evening, everyone. Sorry for being a little bit tardy. We had a opening night for U twelve baseball. And it was pretty action packed over there and um I had to help coach a game. So thanks for your patience. Um, my report is on page thirty five of the packet. And um, I'll browse through this. If people have questions at the end, shoot them my way. And then I also have a fun little ninety second video I'd like to show you if possible. Um, so first off, staff, um, we are fully staffed right now. Just want to say thank you to the board for allowing us to have Tucker come on full time. Um, we have Cole Revus, one of our junior staff members, and Abby back on in a part time manner. Um, Shane and Ben are cranking away at all things programming. And Ben is extremely busy um, working with applications for special events and facility rentals. So busy time of year, but staff is starting to bolster up. So again, thanks for all the support. Um, one thing we've been discussing about as a team in our department and also with our rec advisory board is special events that take place on our ball fields. Um, we're starting to see a lot of new applications, a lot of new requests for folks to spread out throughout the town um and asking to utilize our sports fields. And sports fields are our softball, baseball and soccer fields. Um, using them for vendors and putting up big tents and uh even requesting special event camping. So we're trying to figure out the best way to balance the new requests. Um, looking to make some adjustments in twenty twenty two, so just planting a seed now. We'll continue discussions. Um, but our playing surfaces um need sun and water, and we put special events on them. Um, they don't do so well. Growing grass at high altitude in a um, desert's pretty difficult as it is. And our playing fields get a lot of um requests for programming, which are its primary use. So again, right now we have baseball leagues and softball leagues going on almost every day on each field. So stay tuned for that. Um, current applicants, we're letting them um, they request what they would like to do for twenty twenty one. But as we get to twenty twenty two, we're going to start to advise people to look to other areas. Um, one area of focus for us is the rodeo grounds. Um, it's got lots of room. Obviously, no grass that um could be affected through camping and or vendors. So um, just keeping a watchful eye and we'll keep our teams posted. Um, climbing boulders, Peak Fitness has been great. Uh, they're helping us with our updates on our climbing boulders. And um, making some adjustments and cleaning them and doing reroutes. Hasn't been done for a while, but they're going to do that starting this year, twice a year for us. Um, the BD rec activity bus is something that we are keeping also watchful eye on. Uh, we have been utilizing BD schools, um, small buses to support our swim programs. Um, they've had a change in insurance uh protocol. So only uh staff of BD schools can drive BD um buses. So without a bus this summer, which means we cannot offer our swim lessons. Um, we're giving that information to our clients and guests and and locals to to go direct um, to the aquatic center in Salida and also the Mount Prince and Hot Springs. But um, keeping an eye on acquiring a rec activity bus in the future so we can get kids not only into swimming, but to our ski classes in the winter and also a lot of other programming that could utilize getting kids to and from the community center. Um, here we are post COVID. Um, town is very busy and uh not only with programming, but with guests coming in and out of the community center. Um, people visiting town and looking for some guidance from us. So we have adopted the Chaffey County Code of Conduct that I listed in our report here. Pretty simple information. We put on our front doors. Um, and we send this to people that are renting our facilities and also to all of our kids and adults that are participating in our programming. Pretty simple stuff. Get vaccinated, stay home if sick, get tested, wash your hands. And respect safety protocols, physically distance if unvaccinated and wear a mask indoors if unvaccinated. That's seems to be pretty well received. Um, so we updated uh the rec advisory board on the potential partnership with um Tribeview Water District. Um, they're excited and we're excited um to see what happens in the future. Um, we're also patient on the same breath. So um, thanks board and town staff for working with them to hopefully get us some additional open space to dream up some really cool facilities and uses down the road. Um, so Saint Rose of Lima Church at Columbine Park um remains secured and cleaned. And um, still taking some some breaths to make sure we make the right decision with that facility. There's been a lot of great inquiries um in town. Uh, but we're also trying to weigh out if we could rent that space as one of our facilities. So um, it's good that we got it and we're excited about the future there. Um, pickleball site prep preparation. Um, thank you, Town of Buena Vista, and to the Chaffey County Commissioners. Um, each of you have secured ten thousand dollars towards phase one of this project. Um, and then also the Peak to Peak Pickleball Club has ten thousand dollars. So we got the thirty thousand dollars raised for the work to take place that's scheduled to happen in mid July. Um, concerts in the park. It's a great show Thursday evening, starting June tenth at McPhelony Park. Um, free music for our community has been going on for years. Um, the first show will be a great country western band um to celebrate the kickoff weekend for the one hundredth anniversary of the collegiate peak stampede rodeo. Um, and thank you, BD Fire Department, for being so gracious um with these additional supplies and materials you've had. Um, we were able to, with working with Chris, um, get some toolkits that have been in high need and some other tools to keep our community center up to speed and up to par. And they also donated us another AED unit that we can use for mobile events. So very grateful for that. Um, we had a great bike to school day in May, about a hundred and fifty kids riding their bikes down Main Street. Thank you, BVPD and Megan for being there and escorting the kids down Cedar Street. Um, couple things to report and um so the McPhelony Park shade structure, um, as you see in my report, uh, the updated bid going into twenty twenty one had a three hundred percent increase over twenty twenty. Cost of steel and the cost of labor skyrocketing increases um have forces pretty much to put this project on hold. We're still able to use some of that money for landscaping and signage, and also we acquired a new tent um for the McPhelony Park, which primarily is used for concerts in the park. But once we get our shade structure there in the future, we'll be able to use it for other special events and other gatherings. Um, Pocket Wave Rehabilitation, you may have seen some fundraising efforts going on at Paddle Fest and on the web. I'm raising money for um updated construction work that we hopefully do in twenty twenty two. So really exciting. Thanks, community, for all your support with that project. Um, I'll shift over to programming. So as I said, youth baseball has started. Hundred and fifty five kiddos signed up, twenty two more than our busiest year in twenty nineteen. And girls softball has started a record enrollment in that as well. So as we reported with soccer, I'm a lot more kiddos and a lot more families in town. Um, which is great. And Shane um and Tucker really hustling to keep up with all the new inquiries. Um, adult softball registrations just ended. That will start up next week. Um, and we got dance back. So if you love dancing, we have classes at the community center on Thursdays and Tuesdays. Two classes each night put on by Bill Rideout. He's an amazing instructor. Um, the summers, look, we're looking forward to some adventure camps and also some beginner mountain bike um courses. Terms of facilities, um, we've updated June first, so our capacity is up a little bit higher. We can now do twenty in the Aspen and forty in the Pinion, which is great. Um, as it relates to special events, uh, just want to give a big thanks to Ben for organizing incredible meetings every month with our department heads. Um, thank you, department heads, for giving really good feedbacks. We can help plan safe and sustainable events for our community and guests to engage in. And then real quick, um, coming up, we got the collegiate peaks rodeo this weekend. And then Fourth of July, we'll have the fireworks, um, art in the park and the pancakes in the park. So a little bit of normalcy there. Um, the chamber is not going to host the traditional parade. Um, we respect them for that decision. Then we got the Mountain Mania Car Show and then Gold Rush Days in late July. So lot going on. Thanks for your patience with that report and thank you for your support. And I will answer any questions from the board and mayor.
Questions for Earl? Amy?
Harold, I thought July fourth, there weren't going to be events. Was there? Or was that larger events?
Yeah, so um, Fourth of July, the um, the time range, two days before, two days after. We're holding that weekend for our traditional events, the ones that have happened for um, not forever, but for a long period of time. And those traditional events include Fourth of July Parade, Pancakes in the Park, Art in the Park, um, Fourth of July Fireworks and the Freedom Five K. So those are the traditional events that will be, you know, for lack of a better term, grandfathered into that weekend. And then new events that come to us, we request for them to consider an alternative date because it's already so busy.
And will the farmer's market be allowed that that Sunday, Fourth of July weekend?
Farmer's Market on Fourth of July weekend. Um, since there is so much going on there with Art in the Park and the Chamber, um, we are working with the farmer's market to take either the east side of um McPhelony and or incorporate and get booths with um art in the park. So Melissa's been great from the Chamber to work with the Food Shed Alliance to keep that going for that weekend. So.
Thank you.
I got a question. Is the Fourth of July Parade down Main Street happening this year? Um, that is not happening this year. Um, the Chamber has opted to take a year off of that. And um, yeah, let the dust settle and looking back into twenty twenty two as the next opportunity.
Any other questions for Earl? Thank you very much, Earl.
Yeah. Hey, Phil, did you get that video?
Yes, sir.
Can you show it? Or you want me to show it off my phone?
Uh, give me one second. Oh, you texted that to me, right?
Yeah, it was too big to email.
That sounds good.
This is just a little entertainment for, you know, it's kind of like a commercial break in your programming. So you guys can all, you know, stretch out and.
I'll give it a shot here. One second. We might, well. Technology might actually work here. We might show it in trustee staff interaction.
Okay, that sounds great. I'll I'll queue it up for that. Thanks for your patience.
All right.
Thanks, Earl.
That is the next item on the agenda, trustee staff.
I had by myself much time there.
Well, that's right. We'll start it. I'll start on the other end to go the other way. So you've got plenty of time. Plenty of time. Um, I see Lillian is with us. Is she doing the minutes there, Paula?
I'm doing the minutes.
You're doing the minutes. Lillian's just following along. Wow, bored, huh? So Paula's back, everybody noticed?
Yes.
Any comments for us?
Nothing.
Nothing? That's that's sad. That's sad, Dean, do you have anything to add tonight?
I do not, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dean, Dave Moby.
The only one that I've got, and honestly not sure if it belongs of the board conversation, but you guys all get the email from Marcus trustee last night or have a chance to look at it. About the envision comments. I agree with him and I don't, I don't know that. I don't know that it belongs at this table. But I just wanted to be on record saying that that his comments are, I share his concerns.
His sentiment, okay. I'm sure everybody else got that, I don't know whether you've all had a chance to read it, Philip and I talked about it. Obviously, they are going to be coming back and so. It hasn't been decided how to address them with that at this point. But. I believe and obviously you do too, there's some validity to his, to his comments and actually he wasn't the only one, there were but three separate entities that.
Yeah.
chimed in there, so Philip, I think we'll. Not going to say put them on the spot, but ask them how they're going to respond to that, maybe when that time comes. Because they're going to be coming back, I think, I see me like they were talking either this month or early now.
Twenty second, yeah.
Twenty second, okay. So I'd like to hear some of that, Amy.
Yep, and I was going to bring that up as well. And so over the past, the past week specifically, I've heard from stakeholders motorized group, but also I was surprised, I did hear from. A mountain biking stakeholder, which I was surprised to hear that echoing just some concerns about the plan. So I've heard some issues from a couple different user groups about the rec plan. Which I was surprised because I figured everyone would be, this is amazing, so. I think what I would like to, what maybe the board could. Consider something else was, some folks, I got the sense people didn't all get a chance to comment during the comment period. So perhaps requesting an extension on the comment period for 30 days if we could, if we could make a motion together, that would be one option. Let's give some folks to make sure they get their concerns on record would be what I would be in favor of, which would obviously push any sort of approval back. But yeah, the comments I received, I was, I definitely want to give pause before I would feel comfortable supporting, especially a. The plan's like a $20 million five-year plan, so I feel like we don't get everyone on board now, I'm just concerned what's that going to be like for the next five years, so. I would like to make that motion to request Envision extend the comment period for 30 days. So maybe I make that motion, we can deliberate it, maybe it's not the right move, but it's just something I had, that's what I had thought of.
Clarifying the motion, you would be requesting that they possibly extend that. Obviously for more extended period of time.
For 30 days, there's a comment period that I believe closed on the 4th, so perhaps Envision and I know Earl's listening too, I don't mean to not include him, but. Perhaps see if we could extend that comment period for 30 days.
So we're requesting.
Reopen.
Reopen, that's what I mean.
It's closed on the 4th, right?
I believe it is closed, so if we could perhaps reopen it for 30 days. That would be my motion would be ask Envision to, you know, in a group letter, ask Envision to extend the comment period for 30 days. Effective now.
You have a motion?
When did you get that memo and who was?
Last night, 7:47 last night.
Did he get it submitted by the June 4th deadline?
No. The letter came after the June 4th deadline.
Yeah, but he got his comments, sorry, Earl, you have your hand raised, I just want to clarify that.
He got his letter in on time, I was just going to make the comment that Cindy and her team have received the letter as well. And she knows she's very open-minded, we're going to have a discussion as a council next week about some feedback. But in general, she told me today about 80% was super positive and 20% had a lot of constructive ideas, so. It's going to be pretty common when you do these types of plans, we definitely want to hear everyone out. And you get a lot of good ideas when people, you know, make these comments, so. Yeah, just wanted to kind of throw that out there.
Well, is there opportunity, will those, will those comments be, will the plan change?
It sure can. Yep, and so like, you know, a couple, couple of comments are people, you know, concerned about which projects made the priority list. And that can be reevaluated every year and then also the concentration zones. Those can be reevaluated every year as things change, so there's a lot of flexibility in the plan in certain areas. But, you know, I think as with a lot of master planning. They've been working on it for a long time and they want to present something out there, but if it feels rushed, they'll definitely take the time to make the updates and edits.
Thanks, Earl. If there's a motion on the table, there's no second that I can open.
I'll second it just to move it to discussion.
Discussion, thank you, we have a second, Moby, further discussion. Yes.
I, I'm not sure that it's the board's. It's a weird position for the board to take, I'm not comfortable issuing a formal request like that. I do, I do, I do believe that the process that they're following is, is problematic. But I'm not sure what our role is in it, honestly.
And I take Earl's comment, obviously his, his letter was provided in time. And I will say that's no different than what we often run into as a board. We have, let's say, an item on the agenda that we have already passed through, we've had discussion several times, we have. Inordinate brought before us, we're going to make a vote on it and somebody stands up and said, you didn't ask me. Or it wasn't fair, or, you know, and I'm not saying he's wrong, because I think they have some, he has some valid comments. But you can always. And I actually have seen it with this board, change your mind just because somebody spoke up. Is that the right way to do it? When you've gone through the process, you've done everything the way you're supposed to do it. And at the last minute, they say, hey, wait. You didn't do it right.
But mayor, people don't know about it is more why, some people like.
People do know about it though, see, that's the thing, we've gone through that same process here where it's advertised, it's put in front of you, you've had the opportunity. And they don't say anything until the last minute and say, you didn't give me a chance. And that's, and that I see I, over the past 10, 12 years, I've seen that over, over, over again, where people wait and not say a thing. Until you're ready to vote on it.
Respectfully, Doug, that's, I think, an issue of public engagement and I think public engagement is not easy by any means.
Right.
But we certainly, I think, drawing a hard line like that really deprives us of the public engagement needed to.
So how do we change that? You see what I'm saying, I'm saying we do everything we do.
Better public engagements are.
You put it in the paper, you put it in the new, in the radio, you put it out there, everybody has the opportunity to do it and they choose not to. How do you change that?
They don't choose not to, I don't think.
Yes, they do, they choose not to, otherwise, why didn't they put in their input? You see what I'm saying, they have the opportunity to do it.
Agree to disagree, Doug?
I guess, but how do you change it?
So I think for Envision, perhaps, is there, I can see what you're saying, Dave, is that. Like what is our role, right? It's a county plan that they've gotten all the stakeholders from. But if we're going to approve it and ultimately it's going to be the dollars, our taxpayer dollars that we're putting into this, that's going to be 400,000 from the municipalities, like. I don't know, man, I feel like that's where I feel the obligation.
I feel the obligation as well, I feel it as a citizen, a citizen of the county, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that. And I don't know that it belongs here.
Would you approve all the money too, would you feel comfortable approving the money?
No, but it's not my budget to determine, so I, I, I just don't know what the relationship of this board to this process is.
Does municipalities give money to the?
There will be requests for contribution.
And there's tax funding going into it.
Yes, common ground funding, correct, but then there would be matches from the town as things progress. For instance, if we're updating some of our bathroom facilities as part of those priorities that they listed, yes, town monies would go into them. Sorry, I just want to highlight Daniel Tom from Chaffey County just mentioned that the. Rec plan is being considered by the Chaffey Planning, sorry, Chaffey County Planning Commission for consideration and adoption on its June 29th. Meeting, so. It's going before the various entities.
So we have a second on the table for the discussion.
I'm wondering if, if, if they will be sending out another draft for review. You know, if they're taking comments and making some changes, will there be another opportunity? Doesn't sound like it, but.
And that I, and you know, Earl obviously said they're reviewing the comments that have been and have reviewed the comments that have come in. I can't say there's going to be an additional draft, maybe, maybe clarification or something like that, I don't, I don't know. Or do you have, do you see, foresee any comment or do you have another comment on that part of it? Will there be a new, not a new draft, but a revised draft possibly?
Yeah, I think that was going to be contingent upon the feedback. And just taking a, you know, step back in the conversation, they received 200 independent comments by the deadline. And I guess we're going to meet up on this next week and review, I think it's. It seems logical that there could be some adjustments made if there's common voices and common concerns. So we'll see, I can definitely, I'll be at the next meeting next week and. You know, maybe that's a sentiment that a lot of us as board members carry and. And we don't have to rush into final approval in June and take the time to. To make the edits and bring it back, I'll, I'll see what the team leaders want to do. But yeah, good, good questions are coming up on what the next steps are.
But Phil, you're saying that the.
So the, to the Chaffey County planning. So that would be after our next meeting.
After our next meeting. Cindy, you had something?
I truly did not get the email, I do not know what you guys are talking about.
Okay, so Cindy, maybe we can forward that to Cindy so that she can have a copy and read through that shortly, okay?
Cindy, there's some, in summary, there's some, sorry if you'd be left out, there's some concerns from stakeholders about the rec plan. So the board, the rec plan and vision is coming here kind of for final approval or adoption at the next meeting. So I brought it up and David, we're just trying to just advocate for stakeholders that would be impacted, so that's the.
That was the presentation that we had at the last meeting about the big rec plan. Remember that?
It's Cindy.
The camping spot.
Yeah, exactly.
All of that, all of that being told, yes, yes.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I might know the comments on the screen.
So we have a motion, a second, further discussion over. I don't hear anything else. Paula, I guess we're. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is what the motion is, is to direct the board. To ask. What do we want to ask them? To reconsider their.
Extend the comment period for 30 days, which would ultimately put the approval back.
And when are they, Earl, do you know when they're going to plan on their final decision? What is their plan currently?
End of June.
So 30 days, we put it into July. I, it's up to the board, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Eckstein, yes, trustee Payne, yes, trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Rowe. Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Trustee Flop.
No.
For two, we will, I don't know how to do an official, what kind of official.
Grab something for you, like we did for the county commissioners.
You know, soon as possible, so that they can. At least review, I guess, and give that, open that back up.
Is it possible to perhaps put it out through either the newspaper or the town's website, just like, hey? If they agree to it.
Is that your request that we do that?
Sure, if it, if it comes up, maybe through our rec contacts, if they, if Envision approves, approves it. Perhaps just making sure it goes out to the northern.
Okay, I would, I would question if that's our, if is that our job?
Clarifying question, the letter requesting the, the extension or the plan, sorry, would.
How should comment be extended?
Oh, and that, if it's extended, that be published? That's what you're.
Yes.
Put in the paper, okay?
If they agree, just to make sure.
I would ask for them to do that.
Sure.
Would admire, yeah.
I mean, if we're going to ask them extended, obviously, we want to ask them to notify people.
And I guess the only other thing, I just want to comment, I know the Meadows is coming up, the music venue, that I just want to confirm with our attorney about the Meadows Music Venue, that's not quasi judicial for this town. So just so you guys, heads up, I'll, I'm going to comment on that publicly in the next month, just so you guys know.
Anything else? Eckstein, Amy?
No, thank you.
Devin, do you have anything?
I'm good.
Libby?
I, I listened to a webinar on short-term rentals the other day that I think maybe, I don't know who sent it, maybe it was Amy, but. It was, it was good and they were emphasizing that our code enforcement should be looking for non-compliant. Rentals, it's not really the ones that are, that have already signed up for licenses that are the problem, it's more the, the ones who aren't signing up. And one of the suggestions they had was to have a hotline where neighbors could call in if, you know, if they feel like that there's a. An illegal short-term rental near them. So that was, it was an interesting webinar.
Anything else?
That's it.
We're done.
Nothing for me.
Thank you, Joel Benson.
No, I don't have anything else, y'all.
Thank you, Michelle Stoke.
Um, I, I think I'm going to have to ask for a roll call vote as far as the workers' comp premium adjustment goes. So I could put it in, in the budget amendment.
I'll move to approve the work comp, the pinnacle work comp adjustment. For.
Audit adjustment.
$37,670.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
Second Swisher, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Eckstein, yes, trustee Payne, yes, trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Trustee Flop.
Yes.
Okay, thank you all, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, trustees, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Nora. Okay, Philip, you had a something, something?
I had a something.
Michelle, can you see this on your screen? Okay.
Yes. Yes.
Nice, there you go.
That was awesome.
I couldn't see it on my end, and Nora did the right music, but I, no, actually, I saw it today when I made it at work, but just wanted to tell everyone.
Yeah, Phillip, we, we saw your inbox.
Oh.
That was cool.
Okay. Wow, we got to see it in the room. Good job, Earl.
That's good, yeah, thanks, thanks for bearing with me on that. I just wanted to showcase what we do each month here at BBRec, so.
Thank you, Earl. Philip?
I guess the only other thing is trying to decide what we do with short-term rental discussion. If we bring it back as an agenda item on the twenty-second or something else.
Do you wanna move it to P and Z now? How much further discussion? Do we have further discussion? Do you feel we need to limit the number of rentals?
I say cap. We cap that and then move to P and Z and see what they say.
Not the other way around?
Well, yeah. Move to P and Z and see if they think we wanna cap it.
As presented?
As presented, yeah.
Would you like to make that a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Thank you very much.
I'll second it.
We have a second, further discussion?
Yep, not as, I don't agree with, I think we need to look at some of the specifics. I think there's more discussion, I'd like, I'd like to see more discussion amongst the board with what was presented before we kind of give it our blessing and send it to P and Z, I would think. So once it goes to P and Z and it comes back, nothing changes, right?
Yeah, the opportunity, whatever you want.
It can, but yeah, at that point, it will be a draft ordinance more than likely, so.
You can review the draft. The, the question, I guess, then, do we wanna split this up something? Do you wanna wait to put a cap on it until we decide we wanna do something? Or do we, are we deciding we don't wanna do something urgency so that we can have it ready for the beginning of next year? What is the question, what is the answer?
It's about a cap, so I'm in favor of a cap. Trustee Nyberg's in favor of moving forward with a cap. Can we just, I think that's probably the comment, maybe, to make sure there's majority with that, majority or consensus with that, do you think?
What?
Before we say agenda item or planning and zoning. Trustee Swisher, would you be open to the idea of a cap on short-term rentals?
I am open to that. To a cap on short-term rentals. I, I don't know if this makes sense or not, but if we're sending something to planning and zoning and expecting them to come up with something, and we have something else, you have something else that you want to address with that, are we wasting planning and zoning's time if we're just-
Yeah.
Gonna mutilate what they did?
Absolutely.
Can we make a motion to put a cap? And then have further discussion? How, what is our timeline? I guess is the way to go right now.
Well, we can, we can recreate that timeline any which way we want to.
It's not gonna put us under pressure for the upcoming season when it comes to-
It will, it will condense that time, for sure. So that, once a final decision is made, that amount of time where we can educate, explain, and then do renewals does get condensed. And, you know, if, if we get there, there's a number of things that can be done. If we feel like it's sliding too much before a final decision's been made, you know, we can put a moratorium on them, that's a pretty big step that will get things fired up. So yeah, I mean, you, you get it, you all get that timeline. So that's, that's the only thing, is it, just makes that a little bit tighter.
Can I review my motion?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll make a motion with the cap of seven percent on.
Okay, we have a motion of seven percent.
I'd rather say nine percent. I think we need more discussion.
About eight.
So.
Because we can change it later.
Anything can be amended.
Do you wanna do a cap?
I may.
Okay, so, motion to put some, so if we say motion to put some sort of cap, we say yes, and then set an agenda.
We have a motion, can we have a, do we have a second, or is it dying for lack of motion?
But, okay.
Because we have a motion to put it at seven?
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second, further discussion?
I'd rather say nine. I don't wanna talk about specific numbers, I think it's premature. I think just the idea of moving forward with the cap, and then we have an agenda item on the twenty-second to hash out the details of nine percent, seven percent, which is-
So maybe at that point too, we can try to resolve the questions that remain. You know, what, what we're trying to solve, what kind of a problem are we solving?
Okay, we have a motion, a second, roll call vote. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't, I don't support there being cap with the information that we have. I see it as a cap also on our tourism, which is our income, and also the income for our businesses and the income for our stores and street vote. So I don't support it.
Roll call vote, please.
I'd just like clarification-
Yes.
Motion, so the motion is moved to set a cap of seven percent on STRs?
Correct.
Correct. Or I thought it was just motion to put a cap.
Put, he said a cap of seven percent.
Do you wanna amend your motion at all?
I'll amend my motion and put a cap at eight.
Cap at eight percent?
Eight percent.
Eight percent.
I'll second that.
We got a second, motion and second, further discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee Eckstein? No. Trustee Fay, yes. Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
May I ask a question? Is it still going to planning and zoning after it leaves here? And you still have issues that you want addressed before?
I would just say, let's move forward, whoever's in favor of a cap, and from there, we will, you know, discuss the cap at a next agenda. Meaning, I think it's premature to decide a cap number right now. Personally, so I, but there's a motion on the table, so I don't know if we should go through it.
And a vote, yes.
I'm gonna follow you with this.
Well, I, I know, yeah, I'm with you, I also saw Phillip raise his hand, so I didn't know.
They're taking a vote, so I can't.
Okay, Trustee Rowe?
No.
Trustee Lopey?
No.
You have to tie vote.
So I vote for seven percent cap. Then, we can have a motion to put it on the agenda?
Motion is for eight percent.
Eight percent, I'm sorry, eight percent. Do we have a motion for further discussion that will hold it from going to P and Z? Correct, we can start the process of a percentage?
I have a proposal.
Go for it.
We notice it, because we need to notice for the planning and zoning-
Meeting.
Meeting about this. So we could notice it for their July meeting.
Okay.
That would allow you all to talk about it at July, sorry, June twenty-second, if you would like, for further detail and direction for planning and zoning. And then it's queued up for their meeting in July.
And let's-
The proposed, eight, you know, for now, eight percent.
Percent, and that will be the proposal in that discussion, eight percent. Let's put it on the agenda for the twenty-second.
Okay.
And we will have further discussion.
Thank you. Just to be clear, you voted yes?
Yes. So I'm, I'm, I'm going along with the eight percent, thank you.
Is that the first time that you?
I don't think so, because the last time, I think it was about the same process. No, no, let's, let's do this, man, let's move on. We're gonna have further discussion on the twenty-second anyway, so, so that we can iron out some details and obviously try to figure out what direction are we really going. And if it dies there and doesn't go to P and Z, we leave it the way it is with no cap and okay, don't hit the wall.
And it might be a long agenda item, just get that.
I picked up on that as well.
Next item on the agenda, please, because I was the last one, is an executive session to consider the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real, personal, or other property in interest pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six, that's four oh two, paragraph four, sub-paragraph A, specifically concerning the potential sale of town's fire station. May I have a motion?
Hold on.
Second.
Second. Won't be further discussion. Own favorite, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. We will go into executive session.
Thank you all.